All right, good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 on August 7th, 2023. We'll ask that you would please rise as Pastor Tim Mulder, the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by, or the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the summer weather. We thank you for the outside activities that we've been able to participate in. We pray for continued community development and excitement around this great town of ours. God, we thank you for our firefighters, our first responders, our police officers. We ask for their continued safety, and Lord, that they would just have wisdom as they're dealing with quick and life-threatening situations. We pray that this community would just continue to be good stewards of our parks and natural resources and playgrounds. We ask God that you would continue to bless the local businesses here and churches. Father, we ask that you would guide the council to be good stewards in funding and improvements and with just routine maintenance of the city. We ask God that you would give them wisdom and planning for both short-term and long-term projects. We thank you for the city staff and all that they do, Lord. So many things behind the scenes to help everything run smoothly. We are so thankful for policies that are protecting our kids and families in this community and for the common sense ordinances that just continue to help our community thrive. So we just actually bless this meeting. We thank you, most of all, Father, for Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins, was buried in a rose from the dead. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Mulder. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order a roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is approval of the agenda, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brem. Seth, good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. If you want to add the item from our work session, the motion directing the city attorney to draft the ordinance that Chief Bergen presented, we could certainly do that. Otherwise, we can approve the agenda as presented. I'll leave it up to you.
Any objections to adding that to the agenda?
I'd like to see it on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Well, this will be included unless there's anyone that objects, because if that's taking notice. But I've seen none, we'll add that to the agenda under...
Consent. Consent agenda.
Sure. I mean, that's good.
Okay. The item would be to ask the city attorney to draft that ordinance that we discussed at the work session. Anything else to add?
Nope.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. There are no bids to award, under petitions, communications. There are none that I am aware of. Do believe there are a couple people here who would like to speak to the council at the open forum. So at this time, I will open the forum, open the meeting to the open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the council, please step to the lectern.
Good evening, Mayor Ben, council members, staff, and guests. I'm Rich Wenzel from rural Underwood, and I travel the Fergus Falls, the county seat of Ottertail County, daily, along with hundreds and perhaps thousands of other Ottertail County residents for work, shopping, healthcare, educational, governmental, and business concerns. So it is essential to have the transportation corridors of the county seat be convenient and functional to accommodate the many visitors that come to the county seat each day. The recent demolition of Ottertail Powers Coal Fired Plant and the construction of Ottertail Powers Solar Panel Farm have helped to delineate a new highway trail corridor between Highway 210 and 29 intersection near the rental store on the city's south side to Highway 1 and Water Plant Road intersection on the north side. The new trail running parallel with the proposed highway would connect the Hoot Lake Trail along Highway 1 to the Central Lakes Trail, inspiring tourists to check out Ottertail County all year round. The current Mid-Dot and county intersections at 210 and 29 would be greatly improved with the construction of a roundabout along with the new east-side power road highway. The current population of Ottertail County is 60,915. Fergus Falls is 14,005. Ottertail County outside of Fergus Falls is 46,910. Median household income is 59,456. Cumulative annual income is 2.8 billion. Ottertail County is number one in the nation with the most lakes, 1,048, and drawing thousands of visitors to its shores every year with money to spend. Is it not ironic to each person in this room that the east side of Ottertail, of the county seat, with no functional highway, closest to the largest populous of Ottertail County, with the most money to spend, and the Fergus Falls City Council has no current plans to start buying land necessary for the highway trail corridor that would help draw the outlying populace into the county seat to spend some of their discretionary dollars? Merchants would capture the 7.838% sales tax, including the half-cent sales tax, that funds this community's special projects. In closing, I encourage the council to direct staff to create a joint powers committee with county staff to study the purchase of the land needed for the highway trail corridor. Hesitation on the part of the council will cost many more fortunes later. Thank you, Mayor Ben, and the council, and for your time.
Thank you, Rich.
The blue line on the right side of the map indicates the new proposed highway that would serve the county.
Thanks, Rich.
For the city.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Ma.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. The Fergus Falls City website has a form available for the public to address concerns within the community. The website displays the words "I want to," and when that is selected by the user, it will eventually bring them to a form for them to fill out. I'm here tonight to ask for a revision of this form due to the following reasons. The current form is not available in a paper format to allow citizens that don't have access to a computer or may not have the necessary computer skills needed to complete the form. Also, if photos are to be attached to the form, a higher degree of computer sophistication is truly required. A list of city codes to use as a topic on the form also are not listed. This requires, then, the user to write in his or her own version of the violation to be reported. And last, the form does not indicate confidentiality, or did not indicate confidentiality, to the user or indicate any feedback regarding action taken by the city in response. I am requesting a more viable means for individuals to present troublesome community issues to our city government, and I would like to present a form as a suggested model with the aforementioned items included for your review. The final revision decided by the council does need to be available in its paper form as well as on the Internet to allow for full community access. Thank you very much.
Could you pass these out?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ma. Seeing no one else for the open forum, we'll move to the consent agenda. There are three items this evening for consideration. If anyone would like to discuss any of those individually, we can remove them, or I will entertain a resolution to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that resolution, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, we have three items. I guess we just have two. I'm sorry. We already approved the one that we considered at the work session. So the first item is a resolution declaring Unit 240 as surplus equipment and approving its sale and trade-in and authorizing the purchase of a new roll-off truck. We'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you. So, yeah, basically, you just stated the request to declare Unit 240 surplus and then authorize purchase of a 2023 Freightliner roll-off truck. And so I don't assume you know what a roll-off truck is. There's a picture of the truck that we'll be buying. In talking with some staff, there was one that did not know what a roll-off truck was, so I thought maybe the council didn't know either. So there's the truck. Maybe be heading up to Fargo tomorrow to get it. So the trade-in value is 33,000 for Unit 240. The purchase of the new truck is 280. Minus that, or the trade-in value, that brings the purchase price to $247,000. That will be paid for from the 2023 equipment fund.
Thank you, Guy. We can do this with the resolution?
I'll make the resolution, but I got a question.
You bet.
Well, yours is a trade-in.
Second. Okay, thanks, Jim. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. What year's a trade-in?
Yep. Good question. The trade-in is a 2011, and it has 218,000 miles. And our mechanic told me that the number of hours on there is 9,500, and he says hours, each hour is equivalent to 50 miles. So equivalent hours and miles on that truck is 475,000.
It's time. It's a good, it's a good deal.
All right. Tom?
Just for the record, Guy, would you mind explaining to us? Some of us know what a roll-off is, but I bet a lot of people don't. It's kind of interesting.
Okay, sure. You bet. So that truck, the big yellow hook on there, will hook up to either a 20 or a 30-yard dumpster that we've got.
Those are the big, big, flat rectangular ones.
Big rectangular ones, yep. And it has rollers on the bottom of the container, and it'll roll with that hook pulling it up. It'll roll onto the frame of the truck body, and then it can be taken from one place to another and then tipped back up and emptied, or tipped all the way off and taken off the truck.
Rolled off.
Rolled off.
If you will. Thank you.
So we have two roll-off trucks in our fleet. This will replace the oldest of the two, and it's for operation of our, in our refuse fund. We have customers that will rent the roll-off trucks, and then we have some in place of our own. We use this truck to transport tires down to a recycling center in southern Minnesota. Couldn't remember the name of the town. And then also our recycled electronics. So it gets a lot of use.
Thanks, Guy. Any other questions before we go off the roll? Roll call, please.
Mommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe. Yes.
The resolution is approved. Our next item is a resolution authorizing staff to enter into agreements with the State Historic Preservation Office and Pigeon Consulting to execute a $10,000 grant for the historic district eligibility study. I'll call on Chris Shulkey, who's our Chair of our HPC, Heritage Preservation Commission, as well as the Director of our local museum. Good evening, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I am here tonight to authorize, to ask the city council to enter into agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office and Pigeon Consulting to execute this $10,000 grant, which will be an intensive study to determine eligibility for a commercial historic district in downtown Fergus Falls.
Thanks, Chris.
This has been a long process, so we're finally getting now to the point where we're moving on this.
So there's no cash match from the city?
Oh, the match will, can be an in-kind match, and most of that will be through research at the Historical Society, which we will donate as part of our efforts. So there's no physical or no monetary responsibility from the city for this time.
I'll offer that, and I've got a question.
Sure. Thanks, Anthony. Second, Your Honor, Tom. Thanks. Go ahead, Anthony.
I'm el presidente of the Historical Society. Can I ask why, what kind of like defined the district, you know, so that obviously, you know, like it doesn't include City Hall, which would be like a historic building?
Right.
And it doesn't go to kind of like the Shopko kind of area?
Right.
And likewise, you know, obviously, the mill isn't technically included either.
There are a number of different types of districts that can be applied for through the National Register of Historic Places. This is for exclusively the commercial corridor of downtown Fergus Falls. Now, when they do the study and they look at these other buildings, and if they can say that we can redraw the district, this is just tentative. This is what they're proposing to do, then it can be updated or changed in their final report. But right now, for 10 grand, this is the, this is what we're getting, is the commercial corridor of, from Cascade to Union Avenue, which is the vast majority of downtown. You know, there could be a whole separate, you know, government buildings or public buildings, like the City Hall, the courthouse, you know, that type of thing. But that's a whole different district. So the best chance for this to pass through the National Register, the Parks Service people, is to define, have a clearly delineated district, you know, and be as streamlined as possible. And that's, that's what this is. We can't do a parking, they won't allow a parking lot because there's nothing there. You know, it's not, we're not in anticipation of a building going there. So since there's nothing there and the current Shopko building, or whatever you want to call it, is a non-contributing, is not a historic building.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other questions? Scott?
The map that we've got has this light blue line that says the proposed survey boundary, so that's what you're describing. We would get this for $10,000.
Yep.
And then it also has the red line that is the RFP survey boundary. So when we asked for this RFP, when we asked Pigeon and others to come back and say, this is the area we're considering, that's what the red line is?
The red line was, you know, what we had also discussed, though there were a couple alternatives. Red line was one, blue line was another. And honestly, the blue line was where the exterior of the blue line is the preferred version from the HPC. Again, it's possible that it could expand, but...
Where I guess I'm going with the question is if we asked for an RFP on the red line area, and they came back and said, thanks, but we can do the blue line area for 10 grand, and that's it. But if that's how the conversation went, that would be helpful to know if there's room, you know, to get more for 10 grand or not.
Um, it's possible, but unlikely, because again, that conversation really didn't come up that said, hey, you know, you only have 10 grand, so we're only going to provide this. They looked at, they haven't actually done a physical on-the-boot, on-the-ground walk-around downtown. But based on what we've provided them, this is the corridor that they feel has the best chance of passing to the National Register.
And then the follow-up question would be, okay, so that we go through this and we get this past the National Register, to what advantage is it to us, then, to have gone through this process?
Well, the advantage is there are potential grant money available for facade easements, facade improvements, you know, that kind of thing. Maybe some tax breaks and so forth. Tax credits.
Chris, just to clarify, maybe I think we had this, this conversation has been going on a long time, but for those who weren't a part, a private property owner does not have to engage in being a part of this.
That's correct.
Whatever improvement. That would be the decision at the discretion of the...
There have been districts I've been involved through the State Review Board where a private property owner decides not to, and that's, that's fine.
So we have a resolution on the floor. Any further questions?
I guess I have a question.
Yeah, please.
So I was able to talk to Clara a little bit earlier today regarding this. And then I did get the minutes from the HPC meeting from eight-two. But in here, it says that the consultant stated that the broad survey area does not meet the criteria for the grant that the HPC applied for with SHPO. So does that mean that we are going to not be able to move outside of that blue area?
For 10, for, they will do, no, they, we can. Yes. I mean, that's possible. We can. They, when they get to downtown and do the actual walking, and if they see the River End or City Hall, they're not likely to expand beyond that commercial district because the federal court building, City Hall, the courthouse, that is a whole other project.
So broad survey, is that the red area, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Mommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Constance.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish. Yes.
Joe. Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you, Chris. There are claims this evening presented in the amount of $2,264,250.85. If anyone has any questions, direct them to our city finance director.
I'm overpaying bills.
We have a motion, a resolution to pay the bills.
Resolution, pay the bills.
Someone like to second that? Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Mommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports under, reports from staff and administrative, administrative officers of an update from Guy Taylor on a Meadow Hills Lane parcel.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're just presenting this tonight, gauging the council's interest in potentially selling this parcel. We were approached by the property owner to the west, to the left of the blue highlighted parcel, if the city would sell a portion of that to them. You can see the driveway that runs through there goes to the house there, down to the southeast. So one property owner would potentially buy, potentially a third of it. The driveway portion would have to go to the owner of this house, and then this portion here would potentially be sold to this property owner. Again, we're just gauging the council's interest because we were asked by this property owner. This house was constructed in 1995. That land that is currently owned by the city was retained at that time, potentially for a right-of-way to come from Meadow Hills Lane down into a future development here, and then further to the south, there is also more developable land. So just gauging your interest. Do we want to pursue this, or do we want to retain that for a future right-of-way?
So Guy, is there, so in 1995, or whenever the house was constructed in that right-of-way, has anything changed as far as ownership, potential development, other access to that land that's to the south and west?
Ownership has changed. It's remained within the same family, but children of the original owner now own this. So, yeah, there's...
Is there other access to that?
There is off of Douglas, and that's what I was hoping we could pull up with our GIS. Douglas Avenue from Martin Street goes to the west, and so there's access into that area, but that is the only access. Yeah, so this is Martin, and then Douglas going west. There would be this access into this developable area and this developable area, but that would be the only access. This would be a connection from the north.
Does, do the, do the other two property owners, did they give, have they given, they would be affected, have they given opinions?
The only one I've spoken with is this property owner, and if we don't do anything as far as pursuing a sale, what we do need to probably do is get an ingress egress easement put into place on record for this property owner, which was never done in 1995. So that's his concern, is ingress egress. This other property owner on the east has not been approached.
Well, what you're proposing would be, that particular property would own that stretch, correct?
That driveway piece, yeah. Or the piece to the east.
No, no, the one that, it would be a third, 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 is that what you said?
Yes.
So really, they wouldn't need ingress egress if they own it, right?
Right. Only if we decide not to sell it.
God, I see, I see. Just clear that up if they didn't. Is it, sorry, I know others probably have questions. One last one for me. The, just that, thinking about that area, is it reasonable to think that there would be a, you know, an access to another major development through that? You know, you're already slowing down into like a, kind of a, not a cul-de-sac, I guess, but...
Yeah. More than one point of ingress egress into a development is desirable, for sure.
Sure.
It's leading to some pretty high dollar...
But the main access would be off Douglas.
Yes.
So that's always been established that that, that wouldn't be the main access point, it would just be additional.
Right.
The person who has the ingress, the egress, does he also own that large portion off to the left?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
To the west, yeah. So, I mean, that looks like it would be the area where you'd access it in the future. So, I mean, he's the only person in there, and if he were to sell it for development, then, you know, it would give, immediately give you that access out on the Douglas.
He's expressed interest, I'm sorry, Ben. He's expressed interest on, he'd be okay with it, too?
He's just concerned about his ingress egress.
Right. That would be, we'd have to give him legal passage. And then who takes care of this right now? Do they share it, or?
Yes. It's this property owner here takes care of the west side of the driveway. This property owner here takes care of the east side of the driveway.
Okay.
That was my question.
Who takes care of it?
Yep.
Scott?
As far as any long-term hopes that the city might have to have multiple entrances into this neighborhood, so to speak, as you mentioned, preferable to have more than one. Right now, all the pressure is on Martin Street between Douglas and then, I don't know what that other street is that goes across there.
Where are you talking?
To what, is there, or has there been any conversation further to the west on Douglas to come out over to the highway in any way connecting it that way and getting a second exit out of that neighborhood?
I think there might be some long-range plans there. I know as far as utilities, there's a connection point for a waterman through there at some point, but as far as a roadway going through, I'm not sure.
The, the direction of my thinking would be if we were fairly confident that another access to this neighborhood would be forthcoming out the west end of Douglas, I'd be more likely to give up this access.
Yeah. I don't know the chances of that. The property owner there, it's pretty well established and been there for many years.
I think if it, if it was going to happen at all, it's likely to be that kind of, there's a kind of a grass area to the kind of the north, more central of this picture. There, it's all kind of owned by family members of the same group. So I think if it was going to get developed, that would probably be a better access as opposed to kind of the east or the west part of the lot.
Actually, the, the piece I think you're talking about, the north there is Lutheran Brotherhood, is it not, Guy?
Talking right here. Right there?
Yeah.
It's for sale right now. Owned by L.B. Holmes.
Yeah, Lutheran Brotherhood.
So you're looking for direction from the council? Any...
I, I would make the motion or resolution that we allow city staff to pursue it and come back, and if the three property owners are not in agreement, then it just gives the egress.
We have a motion second. Further questions or comments?
We could let them, the three of them work it out. I mean, figure it out, then we have to put a price on it, evidently. I'm sure.
And as far as the sale, it is a platted lot, so it would have to be... And as far as the sale, it is a platted lot, so it would have to be replatted because of a three-way split.
At their cost. That's why I like that.
We have a motion in a second to allow staff to continue discussions with the three property owners and bring back if there's an agreement. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Guy. There is no old business or unfinished business that I'm aware of and there is no new business to come before the council this evening. Lynn, do you have any announcements? Alright, we're going to adjourn this meeting to a closed session to discuss threatened litigation pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subsection 3B. We will be reconvening briefly after that. Closed session is.